All right, seeing 6:30, I'd like to call the open meeting to start for Wednesday, September 25th, 2024.
John Burke.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Present.
Jim Dunn.
Yes.
Bob Clark.
Two.
Carolina Hernandez.
Yes.
Crystal Lee Nodker.
Courtney Breckman.
Here.
In addition, I'd like to acknowledge Superintendent Alan Strauss, Ms. Terri Fleming, Mr. Jack Higgins, Ms. Kelly Steele, and Ms. Renee Rodriguez, also present at the table. Aside from Lake Camp, will anybody here tonight be recording the meeting? Okay, in the mask, okay. Right, I ask you all to join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting of September 4th of this year. Hearing a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstained?
She has to abstain.
Carolina?
Oh, I say no.
Okay, you.
You have to abstain.
You abstain from it?
Yes, abstain.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion passes.
Hi, everybody. 10:23, we are excited to once again host our breakfast at the middle school for our senior citizens in both towns. It will be at 8:30 at the middle school, Wednesday, October 23rd. For those of you who have asked and know the school committee enjoyed it over the last couple of years, we're preparing to bring back students to the school committee meetings. So principals are signing up now. Hopefully, I'm not sure whether it'll start in October or it'll start in November. And then there will be a correlation between whichever school is presenting and the reports that both Kelly and Terri are giving. So we'll continue the same pattern we've had in the past. October 9th, Unified Basketball has its first home game. Might be our second, actually. But we're asking the community to come out and cheer on our Lakers. All teams and clubs have been invited, and we encourage families throughout the district to attend. If you can remember, a couple of years ago, the gym was packed. I remember the letter from the born parent, how they looked at our school and our kids and our community, and I think packing the gym once again will be a wonderful thing. There'll be more information coming on that, and I'm sure Kelly will have a report on it. One of the concerns that we've had over the last couple of years, it started with the morning at primary schools was transportation, buses arriving late, which we were able to do a great deal of work with Kendra Zendis and his team. But now we have to deal with the afternoon. So we had our first meeting with Kendra Zendis, his assistant, Terri, myself, and the regional director, which is the first time we've been able to meet with the regional director, to discuss solutions to improve the dismissal times for primary schools. We talked about three things. So this is not about what we're changing, so I don't want people starting to think, uh-oh, this is what we're doing. The problem has been three things. Number one, the bell times. We know that during the pandemic, and it was the right decision, that school start times changed. And it was the right decision at the time, but we have not returned since then. And so therefore, the three tiers that we have, the high school and middle school tier, GRAES tier, and FES and AES tier, have been impacted by it. So that's one issue. Second issue is something that's known as stop grouping. Now, this is not for primary concern, because that won't change, but what we do here in Free Town Lakeville is, stop grouping means if there's a cul-de-sac, for example, we stop at each of the houses for the high school students and the middle school students, rather than dropping students off at the bottom of the cul-de-sac and letting kids walk. I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't, but that adds an additional 10, 15, 20 minutes through the cul-de-sac. And so that's something we're going to look at. Third thing, finally, after a number of years of asking, First Planning is performing right now a full routing analysis of the Free Town Lakeville district. This is a deep dive assessment that usually takes eight to 12 weeks. We haven't done it, I know Steve Owen, when I first got here, had asked to have it done, so it's been a number of years. Now, with that, the regional director of First Student will be coming here on October 23rd to show potential improvements that can be made to the routing. We are going to have a meeting, Courtney is going to sit in on that, Terri, myself, Kelly, and Jack, as well as Kendra Zendis and Elaine, his assistant, we're all going to sit down, prepare, but we are going to give a presentation to the community about how we can alleviate this problem. Because the problem's not about adding buses, it's not, it has nothing to do with that. It's what can we do within the structure of what we have? So we'll have a lot more information by then, okay? Bus evacuations will be taken at the end of this month in the first week of October, weather dependent, and Kendra Zendis coordinates that. School committee negotiations for teachers, secretary, and paraprofessionals are going to begin. The team from school committee side has been set, one representative from each town, school committee members, administration, and legal counsel. So that will be beginning soon. The regional safety committee, which is composed of members of the police and fire departments, including both SROs, and I will say it again, that it is wonderful to have Detective Maderos from Free Town as part of our SROs. I'm sure it's a comfort to Free Town, but it's wonderful for us for communication to have him on board. Town administrators, central office, school administrators, and various select board members meet and continue to meet as to how we can best protect our students. There have been a number of questions in terms of what's next for us, in terms of upgrades. We had a meeting last spring. One of the things that we talked about, we need to continue to apply for safety grants. Unfortunately, we're talking about things such as higher-tech cameras, and I'm going to leave it at that for outside. Those are not cheap, and so when we're talking about five, six, seven, eight per school, five schools, you're talking about a significant amount of money. And then making sure our camera system, our video system is up to date. So there's a lot of work that we have to do there. I do want to assure everyone that every situation that our buildings handle are in collaboration with our police departments, from the moment something's reported, and we look to disseminate information without violating confidentiality regulations. I understand people want information, and when we don't have it, we create our own narrative. And so we had a meeting today, I thought it was really productive, and we talked about what we can do differently in handling disseminating information, but the agreement is, there are certain things that no one's going to know, that we have to keep confidential for Now the exciting part, and it's been a long time since I've sat here talking about teaching and learning, I know it's Terri's thing, and she's going to do more in November when we talk about MCAS, but as everybody knows, MCAS and Accountability Index was embargoed for a while, and it was released yesterday. We are very pleased with the direction the district is going academically. I said it when I first got here, and I will continue to say it, the spring board to excellence has to start with attendance. If kids are not in school, our great teachers can't do what they're doing. We all know what happened with the pandemic, there's no blame to be put around, but attendance was a problem across the Commonwealth and across the country. Chronic absenteeism, which is considered 18 or more absences during the year for any reason, and it's important that parents understand that, if a student is out hospitalized for 30 days, DESI doesn't care about that. Whether that's right or wrong is in our call, they still consider somebody to be likely absent. It has gone from, when we first arrived, two years ago, again, we receive the chronic absentee rates from the '21-'22 school year. So when we arrived and got them in September, the rate was 23.3% of our students were out 18 or more times during the year. High, not nearly as high as some districts, but that's high for us, without question. Pre-pandemic, we were in eights, nines, and tens. So that gives you some understanding, and I'm going to say it again, that has nothing to do with anything other than what happened during the pandemic. It's not about teachers, it's not about the school, it's not about things weren't done right. It's just an after effect of the pandemic. This year, we were at 11.8%. That is a significant change in two years, and we are very, very proud of that. So, school by school, let's talk quickly, I'm going to give you a bunch of numbers, we're going to go into much more detail, but I want the community to hear how positive things are. At AES, chronic absenteeism decreased from 15.1% to 11.1%. Students with disabilities went from 25.7% to 12.4%. That's a significant increase, or decrease, excuse me. And our high-needs population went from 22%, 22.4, excuse me, to 12.4. So I give Bethany and her team tremendous credit. It takes a tremendous amount of work to ensure kids are coming back into school every day. Their MCAS scores improved 5.4 points for students with disabilities, high-needs 1.5 points. Again, some excellent work. FES, chronic absenteeism was at 25.8% in '21-'22, it's down to 7.8% last year. ELA increased 9.2 points across all students, high-needs students increased 5.9 points, math increased 7.8 points for high-needs, 9.9 for special education. All indicators in all groups saw increases at FES. Wonderful, wonderful news. At GRAES, chronic absenteeism went from 12.9% to 9.6%. Students with disabilities decreased 22%, 22.1% to 12.8%. Again, Liz and her team, excellent job, you should be commended, it takes a tremendous amount of work, I saw Liz somewhere, oh, there she is, to bring kids back into school, and it's really about relationship building across the board. If kids want to feel, if kids feel a sense of unity, care, and everything else, it will be easier for those who are struggling to come back. Science students, all students increased by 6.1 points, 9.9 points for students with disabilities. Math, all students increased 3.4 points, lowest-performing students increased 6.6 points, students with disabilities 8.9 points. And for ELA, lowest-performing students increased 1.6. So again, excellent job at GRAES, well done. The middle school, chronic absenteeism went from 13.8 to 11.7. MCAS, typical growth in the high-range area in math, all students and the lowest-performing all in the high range, which is a real positive. ELA, lowest-performing students increased 3.9 points. Again, pockets of areas where we really wanted to focus, where we did focus last year, and so that's real positive. The high school, chronic absenteeism went from 15.1 to 10.9. One of the things that I'm most impressed with, is Caitlin here? I don't know if she's here. Nope. Lowest-performing students went from 25% chronic absenteeism to 2.8%. It's a wonderful, wonderful decrease. Our advanced coursework went from 59% to 61% because our special education students and high-needs students took more advanced courses last year than they have in the past. Wonderful. ELA, 4.8-point increase in 7.4 for our lowest-performing students. Science, 7.1 for all students, 4.5 for lowest-performing. Math, 3.1-point increase, excuse me, high-needs 4.6 points, 4.7-point increase for lowest-performing students. And our arts, arts growth, which is the number of students taking art courses exceeded typical growth and is in the high range. So what does all that mean for the high school? It allowed a Ponequid high school to be named a 2024 School of Recognition for the first time since 2017. ARHS is one of only 10 high schools in the Commonwealth to receive this distinction. This is a wonderful honor for our high school staff and students in our entire school community. DESI reports of the School of Recognition demonstrates high levels of achievement and growth, and are making significant progress towards targets. The criteria also includes an emphasis on the performance of the school's lowest-performing schools. Just phenomenal news. So as we look at what has transpired academically in what is actually 19 school months, the district has certainly moved in the right direction. We have outperformed almost all districts in our region, yet we certainly have more work to do in multiple areas, and we're trending in the right direction. With our staff and our administrators, I am absolutely sure that we will continue to work on behalf of all our students and raise these scores. This is great news for us, and it's about time that we celebrated the good stuff that's happening here. So that's my report. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, Superintendent? Thank you, excellent news. FY '24-'25 budget.
Thanks. Thank you. So I have for you an update on both the '24, the closing of FY '24, as well as what we have started, as we've started '25, where we are at this point. So the FY '24 close is completed, there was a balance in the general fund of $593,417.27 with $136,897,000 of encumbrances. As such, there was a surplus of approximately 140, well, not approximately, it's $456,520.27. This amount was closed out to E&amp;D. You'll see, you can see the charts as the general fund overview and how the E&amp;D will be at least estimated for the current year. So there are a couple of things I think worth noting, the certified E&amp;D in '24 was $1,785,368. During the audit of the FY '23, it was identified by the auditor that there were missed postings in grants and revolving funds that had to be expensed to the general fund. So that was $263,238 had to be then pushed to the E&amp;D line. As a result, the new restated balance that would be in E&amp;D would be $2,048,606. In the current year, we had revenue of $43,291,414. If you add, in addition to that, there were other sources of revenue, one being Medicaid reimbursements, $47,000 and change, miscellaneous receipts of $152,000 and change. And then it's important to note a couple of things. In the close of '23, there were a remainder of $187,808 in encumbrances that were carried over. Some of those encumbrances were ones that had carried over from even previous year. These were results, in some ways, of COVID, supply chain issues that occurred. And so one of the actions that we took at the end of '24 was to make sure anything that wasn't closed by then, we just closed out. So we still, if we had a contract with a company that had not delivered the goods by that point, we were reaching out to them, discontinuing that contract, and we closed out. It was $187,000 that was closed out at that point. That counts effectively as revenue, because it's encumbrances from the year before. In addition to that, we did a fair amount of closing out of past-year fund balances, things that, in the close of FY '23, fund balances that would have been closed in the natural progression of a closing of the fiscal year, were left in fund balance. We closed them out, once again, if you're talking about a particular fund outside of the general fund, and you close out that balance because it is all, everything has been taken care of, except it should have been closed in '23, that number also has to come over effectively as encumbered revenue into the current fiscal year. So that's $97,000. And then if you recall, last spring, the school committee had voted for $176,378 for E&amp;D to be used for operations in FY '24. Those dollars were not utilized, so it went back into E&amp;D. As a result, the quote-unquote, if you will, revenue comes out to be $43,952,094. When you start working your way through, and you can see it on the sheet, you have expenditures of, as I pointed out before, $42,757, and encumbrances of $136,000, leaving us then with an estimated E&amp;D remainder of $3,106,039. In '25, our estimated threshold is $2.215 million. That leaves us with an estimated overage of E&amp;D of $890,000. So those are, those would be the estimated dollars that will go back to the towns, okay? I think it's important to discuss why such a large number was remaining in excess and deficiency. There's a few pieces. First of all, is revenue. In the spring of '24, the district received an additional $243,864 for extraordinary relief that had to be paid, had to be spent in that year. So it came to us as additional funds for out-of-district tuitions, and it had to be spent in '24. We also, as I mentioned before, had the $187,000 of past-year encumbrances that were carried over. Had they been, I can't say that all $187,000 would have been closed out in '23, but we can assume, you know, in a full closing of '23, we would have seen some, that number wouldn't be quite as large. And in addition, the fund balances of $97,000, again, had '23 been closed fully, there would have been, that $97,000 wouldn't have carried over into '24. Leaving effectively additional revenue numbers of $528,000, half a million dollars. In addition to that, in this year, ESER was used as an alternative funding source for a number of general fund expenditures that had been, jumpstart in FLMS summer school at $30,858, extended school year salaries in '23 at $31,26, expenditures on Chromebooks and access points for YFI at $82,523, an eye-ready curriculum and assessment tool, which is $137,89. Those would have been paid out of the general fund had we not had ESER. And quite honestly, as my understanding, it wasn't coordinated in the preparation of '24 that these were going to be used, ESER was going to be used rather than the general We had two positions, unique situations happening with positions, we had a staff member who took a full year of leave, a replacement was not hired as the, it was believed that the staff member was going to come back in the fall, didn't return right away, and extended, extended. Each time when we believed that the staff member was going to return, the leave was extended and it went through the whole year. So ultimately, that salary was not expended, and it was about $30,000. And that's an approximate number. We also had a circumstance where, due to the enrollment in middle school at GRAES relative to our life skills program, we had the GRAES life skills teacher moved up to the middle school and taught a small group of students that were going from grades four through seven, and as a result, was able to have one program instead of having two separate programs. That actually has worked out, that that teacher has remained at the middle school. But what, when that happened, we didn't backfill the position in GRAES, it's been filled, but it was not filled out. So that's approximately $75,000 that was budgeted but was not expended. So if you also understand that we froze the budget on May 15th, Superintendent Strauss put a freeze on our non-critical purchases by the end of, through June 30th, this was a response to the uncertainty resulting from the approximate $791,000 of unfunded budget items identified in the FY '25 budget. I did an analysis of spending for the time periods, May 15th through June 15th, for the previous few years. I didn't go all the way to June 30th, because June 30th becomes a very, it becomes this date that a lot of things get put to, that occur throughout the year. It's difficult, especially with ESER spending that had happened in previous years. I felt like it was a decent analysis to look at May 15th through June 15th, for this year, this past fiscal year, as well as the previous couple of years, to see where our spending was relative. We were about $150,000 less than we would have spent had we not had the freeze. So if you include the expenditure adjustment of $385,596 as resulting from ESER spending, as well as positions that were budgeted but ultimately did not get utilized, the additional revenue as a result of extraordinary relief, and then the closing of '23, issues with closing of '23, and then the $150,000 that we would have likely seen in spending, we would have, the adjustment would have been over a million. So where we had a, we had a remainder of $890,000, had those things not been the case, we would have had, we would have, we would have gone into the E&amp;D number, we would have gone under it. So effectively, that's the reason why. I share with you, I think, while I certainly haven't hidden my concern for the work that needed to be done, it's been a very busy summer getting it done, but I think it's a tribute to this district and the people who work here, because there was a lot of upheaval, if you will, over the last 18 months, 12, 13, 15 months, relative to the business office and within the district. And the result is not, we're in a deficit. Result is that the people in this district recognized, didn't spend, overspend, they recognized there were issues and said, all right, we're going to hold off, we're going to hold off, and that's ultimately why we have money going back that wasn't utilized. In '25, you can see a breakdown of our revenue, as well as our expenditures, relative to region, instructional materials, contracted services, and so forth. Our assessment sheet for the current year is included in the packet with no change from May 28th, the last time we discussed this. The assessment for Chapter 70 continues to be $11,940,339, and this was the additional $104 per pupil that we had discussed on May 28th, and then was finalized over the summer. The FY '25 estimate for Chapter 71 transportation is $1,827.26, and this is no change from the estimates that we were, we discussed back in May. That's all I've got for you.
Thanks, Jack.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
The $890,000 estimated overage, when is that confirmed, and when is the money actually sent back to the towns?
Great question. Monday is the date that is the, that we have to submit our balance sheet. I can submit it beforehand, and I'm trying to, but Monday is my deadline for submitting it, as well as the end of year report, which we are close to finishing as well. And then, after that, I'm not sure of the timeline it takes for the state to assess and look through the numbers, and then give us our certified number. But then, at that point, once they give us our certified number, I come to you, and we make the determination of how that money goes back to the towns.
Any questions?
Just a comment and maybe a question too. Jack, thank you for all the work you did, and another thing to celebrate in good news. I mean, to have a remainder, because it was just a few short months ago, we were looking at what we thought was a deficit, so to come back with that is great. How does that 890 break down to the two towns, or is that?
So if you look at the assessment.
$56.44, I believe. $56.44?
Yeah. I have an assessment sheet right here.
I think it's 56%.
Yeah, I believe it's 56. It breaks down in the same way that the, the assessment breaks down, the same percentage for the, for the year.
And then the E and D balance, just to make it simple for me, is sitting there, I see the threshold number, but the balance in?
That would be the number that would be, assuming all of the, when the state agrees to all these things, the state would say, that's your, you are maxed out at your E and D number.
Okay. Thank you. And that, just one final comment, that sort of satisfies the need for, I know the Finance Committee is still toying around with the idea of an audit, but I'm now thinking that this satisfies that given, we're giving money back to the towns. I guess that would be a recommendation.
I think you're talking to me, but I think you really are talking to the school committee because I was certainly not the one who was suggesting the audit. I'm fine with having the audit, but I'm.
So yeah, we can just wait till you for a recommendation, but it's great news and thank you for what you did.
Any other questions, Jack?
Yeah. On the transportation update, what percentage, state percentage are you basing that on, as far as, how much is the state going to pick up?
So the number that I've identified for you at the bottom there, the $1,827.26, that is the number that will be submitted to us as revenue from the state. Not, not, that's not our, necessarily all of our transportation costs, but that's the number we'll get.
Okay.
At this point, that's the number they are, they're going to give us.
It's still not 100%.
They play with that number all the time.
Yes, they do, and I will keep giving you updates as we go through the year.
And it's not 100%.
Another hazard.
Right. Right.
What it's supposed to be.
Correct. All right, Jack, thank you very much. If there's no other questions. Moving on, superintendent evaluation. The last meeting we had, the committee went around, we gave our individual ratings on the indicators for the superintendent evaluation. Following that meeting, we submitted our individual ratings to the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee then worked up a summary incorporating all of the individual ratings. We have the summary. The summary has been signed by school committee, signed by the superintendent. The superintendent received an overall proficient evaluation for this year. There was one area that we were found to be needing some improvement. There was a recommendation by the school committee to move these evaluations to a one-year process instead of a two-year cycle. The summary evaluation requires a signature from an additional school committee member who is not here at the moment. As soon as that signature has been obtained, the evaluation will be posted. Any questions? Anybody? Moving on to public participation. Public participation should be in accordance with our policies. Each speaker will be permitted a maximum of three minutes, during which time they can speak about the topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. To proceduralize it a little more, we have, now have a sign-in sheet in place, and we will ask all speakers to kindly put their name on the sign-in sheet.
And?
Okay.
And?
Yeah. We will be monitoring the time permitted, to be fair to everybody that wants to speak, to keep it within three minutes if possible. Okay? Is there anybody here for public participation? The sign-in sheet has been located up at the podium.
Oh, yes. If anyone else wants to speak, the sign-in sheet is right here, available. Let me know if I need to speak louder or anything. I'm kind of blocked in one ear here, so. So thank you for having public participation back. There's been a few meetings that we've done at recently that it hasn't been on, so it's great to have it on there so, you know, we have our three minutes to share our feelings. So tonight, I just wanted to take a moment and focus on progress. We all come to these meetings because we care deeply about the future of our school, our students, and our community. But progress isn't easy. It's no secret that not everyone in this room agrees on every decision, and that's okay. Healthy debate and diverse viewpoints are essential in making good decisions. However, there comes a time when debate turns into obstruction. And then we must ask ourselves, who are we really serving here? The actions taken by some members of this committee, such as false accusations of sexism, racism, are clearly not focusing on the progress we need to make, and quite frankly, our students deserve. Do you want me to wait?
Thank you.
Okay. We cannot afford to continue to delay the work that needs to be done. Moving forward doesn't mean that we agree on everything, but it does mean that we try and find common ground where it exists and really stop the intentional sabotage. Please stop spending energy looking for things that simply just aren't there. In a letter from a school committee member to the committee, I am one of the ladies, referenced loosely, who was referred to as a hyena. Is this promoting progress? I don't think so. I will not apologize for my passion for our students, our schools, and our community. Let's focus on what matters, the well-being and success of our students, and let's move forward with a purpose. Back to basics, it's about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I apologize if I also could ask if any, if you could kindly state your name and town.
I'll just wait for Alma Horst.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I just wrote something and prepared it, so I'll just read it off of here. The ugliness needs to stop. The personal attacks, the accusations, the false narratives, all of it. We tell our children bullying is wrong. We tell them to be kind, compassionate, understanding, and accepting, but actions speak louder than words. How can we expect any of those things from them when we do not set the example? I have been up at this podium before, thanking town leaders for finding the budget issue. I appreciated that it had been caught so it could be resolved. I would have hoped everyone could collaborate, but sadly, it seems there is an agenda, and honestly, as an observer, it feels like a personal one. I have not heard a single comment thanking Mr. Higgins resolving the budget issue from the towns, or the fact that Mr. Strauss waived his salary increase for the year. It is upsetting how selective the focus is. I attended the August 21st meeting and heard Ms. Hernandez describe the audience's reactions to hearing the actions admitted by Ms. Ning as disrespectful passion. It is interesting that I have never heard Ms. Hernandez comment on any of the ugly things people have come up and said at this podium. I later learned that in an email to other members of the school committee, she stated the ladies, and she quote, using that term loosely, in the audience sounded like hyenas, and it felt like a meeting was held in a quote, "project complex." What exactly was being implied? Being someone that was quote, "a lady" at that meeting, I would like to know. How can we trust or expect committee members to represent us when they are disparaging us behind closed doors? It also does not go unnoticed or unnoted that family members of these two school committee members continue to spread hate and vitriol in every Lake Hill comment section, but nothing is said about that either. It is clear where these two school committee members stand in their personal opinion of our superintendent and other members of the committee. In order to be more knowledgeable on what was accused by Ms. Ning, I personally called the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents following the August 21st meeting. I spoke with Erica in their office, who confirmed no one in their office spoke to Ms. Ning, and there was no one there named John. Per the letter from Mass, only Robert Ning called and said he was referred by Dussie, yet Ms. Ning continued to excuse accusations based on what she was told by these entities. It is highly concerning. It appears Ms. Ning feels so emboldened to publicly state falsehoods to the residents of Lakeville and Freetown. The latest round of accusations are even more disturbing. In attending in person or virtually every meeting, I have never witnessed any racist or sexist comments or undertones. I have seen an egregious level of disrespect, and that was from the accusing member. The strongest example was during a finance committee meeting where I watched her use her role as a chair to censor an employee of the main office attending virtually by muting her and threatening to do it again depending on what she was about to say. There has also been cell phone usage during meetings, which I do not believe is allowed and feel should be addressed. I have heard so many positive things regarding the last few years, from increased AP offerings and scores, security upgrades, and backpack programs to feed our students and their families on weekends. Do we have to work on things? Of course we do. We should always be striving to be better, but we should also celebrate our wins and not put all focus on negativity. So again, the ugliness needs to stop, and it starts with us.
Ms. Cook, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public participation?
Hi, Margaret French, Freetown. Jack, just a quick question. Last year on the E and D, there was, I believe, $300,000 that was disallowed because of misfiling. Has that been rectified, or?
We won't know until the town, until the state comes back to us, but we, you know, as, in our closing of '24, we made, as I mentioned to you, like the past year fund balances, we did as much as we could in the time limit, basically closing two years. But we'll continue to do that in the coming year when we identify those places where there's dollars left in a withholding account that should, that should have been moved correctly. So I don't have a full answer for you yet, but, but we'll know soon from the state.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. French. Is there anyone else? Thank you very much, everybody. Moving on to new business, Lakeville Arts Council donation.
The Lakeville Arts Council is proud to announce that we will be donating, that they will be donating, excuse me, $500 in September of 2024 to Ponacquay Regional High School for six-to-seven 30-by-40 hinge display frames for the purpose of showcasing student art. These display frames will exhibit approximately 20 students' personal art each month. This will allow students, teachers, and visitors to view the creativity that thrives within the walls of ARHS. Obviously, because it's a donation, the school committee must approve it. It's a wonderful gesture by the Arts Council, and as I said in my statement, the arts continue to grow here, so I want to thank the Arts Council.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. We thank the Arts Council for their donation.
Yeah, we send a thank you.
High school field trips?
High school field trips.
Out-of-state field trips. Ponacquay, DECA, which is just one of the most remarkable programs I've seen, is requesting permission to attend overnight and out-of-state field trips. You should have a list, I believe, in front. There's, DECA has no requirements concerning vaccinations, always considers the health and safety of attendees, staff, partners, onsite vendors, service providers, has their top priority. Students will participate in various interactive sessions through learning labs, competitions, general sessions, college career and company exhibits. They are looking to take trips to Charlotte, North Carolina, Hyannis, Mass, Boston, Mass, Orlando, Florida, and Portsmouth, Rhode Island for the Newport Car Museum. So you have to approve any out-of-state trips.
I will entertain a motion to accept these out-of-state field trips for DECA students as presented. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
If I can add one thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
DECA does a fantastic job in helping kids to find fundraising opportunities, but I think as we continue to move forward, it's another conversation for us as to how do we ensure that students who don't have means at home, who want to participate in this, same question with athletics, how are we going to help support it? It's a slippery slope, I understand that, but so the community understands the trip to Charlotte, North Carolina is $600, to Hyannis is $190, to Boston is $550 because it's so many nights, to Florida is $1,200, Newport Car Museum is $50. So, you know, we have to start thinking about that as a community. I know there was a wonderful project done last year for, with boosters in terms of helping students, so it's, it's something that we're continually working on. So I just want the school committee aware of that.
And if I could ask a question? Do you know the DECA participation rate? I remember at one point, it was, it was pretty significant, large portion of the high school.
Yeah, I believe it's around 105. I'll get you the exact number. I'll send it to the committee, but it's, participation rate is big, without question. Ms. Cronin and Mr. Rose would do a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Mileage reimbursement values.
So at the, at the July 31st, 2024 meeting, Jack proposed that the committee votes to set the mileage rate for FLRSD employees who are going between multiple schools to be in alignment with the current rate set by the IRS at 67 cents per mile. We sent you a link for supporting evidence of the rate, but this is something you have to go around. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
No, we talked about it on the 31st. If there's any questions, you'd be happy to answer.
Do they set that rate every year?
They do, yes.
So it's a yearly?
It's a year, so we'll, we'll look again in January.
What are we currently paying, you know?
We are, we are using this rate, but, but there was never a vote in the past, but it should be voted on, so this is confirming something that we, we need to use.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the mileage increase request as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. We do need to fill a couple of vacancies on some of our subcommittees. We need, we could, we need a Lakeville representative for the collective bargaining subcommittee. I'm sorry. Okay. Is there a nomination for a candidate?
Carolina Hernandez.
Okay. Hearing Carolina. Any discussion?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Sorry, any discussion? All those in favor of Carolina Hernandez to join the collective bargaining subcommittee? Receive.
Do you need a roll call vote?
Is it a roll call vote? Okay, my apologies.
That's okay. John Hart?
Aye.
Steve Sylvia?
Aye.
Jim Blum?
Aye.
Bob Clark?
Aye.
Crystal Inge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Carolina.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a...
Regional Finance Subcommittee.
Regional Finance Subcommittee, Lakeville member.
Steve Sylvia.
I decline the nomination.
Carolina Hernandez.
I decline.
Oh my God.
I nominate John Burke.
He can't. His wife works at the district.
He can remove himself for a second.
I don't know. I think Crystal's right that because the bargaining unit, the teacher's bargaining unit she's a member of, I don't know if that would be considered a conflict. I certainly can call legal, or just call, you know...
I would get an opinion.
I'll call MASC, actually.
Sitting as the chair of the committee.
Right, no, no, right. So I'm just, I will check that out.
For the public, my spouse is a district employee.
So why don't we table that one?
Okay. I'll find it out and then send it out to the committee tomorrow.
Who's tabled?
Okay, I have a, I have a motion and a second to table the Regional Finance Subcommittee appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, that is tabled. We need a representative from either town for the District Wellness Committee. I will entertain a nominee.
I haven't been on that committee yet.
I have a nomination of Jen Blum. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all roll call vote.
John Burke?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
You nominate yourself. Bob Clark? Carolina Hernandez?
Yes.
Crystal England?
Yes.
Courtney Brightman?
Aye.
Okay. I think as of right now, our, our representation is met.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Please, go ahead, Courtney.
After I was selected for the delegate at the MASK November Conference, I had reached out to you because I had a conflict with some travel, and I mentioned I wasn't going to be able to attend, so I don't know if you need to select somebody else for this.
I can ask.
I'm already going.
You're going?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you, Caroline. Okay, any, any questions at the table for reorganization? I thank you, everybody. All right. Directors' reports. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you. So there's a few things I'd like to cover with you tonight. Begin with our commercial insurance carriers recommending that all, all staff, all FLRSD staff, including volunteers, have a read and sign of sexual abuse and misconduct prevention documents that they, that they, they have presented to us. Our legal counsel has reviewed it, made adjustments as necessary. Existing staff would be expected to read and acknowledge through their signature, and then this would become a part of our onboarding process with all new employees as well as for volunteers. The document has been, as I said, the document's been reviewed by legal counsel and it's for your review, not necessarily for your acceptance tonight, but just some, that would be a further discussion down the road.
Mr. Higgins, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So when you say volunteers, are you talking about just volunteers in the classroom or any volunteers like at PTO events?
Anyone that we would quarry would be expected to sign.
That would be all volunteers.
Yes.
So it's basically everyone. And I think it's important for the community to understand that, that poor Renee is responsible for getting quarries for absolutely every volunteer from primary schools. I'm going to reiterate that it is not the same onboarding process as it may be in a business where it can be done in two days. It usually takes a couple of weeks.
It's been a week at least.
To get everything done, so if somebody comes to us last minute and says tomorrow there's something at FES Fun Run, we, we can't say yes. As much as I want to, we can't, simply because then we're going against our own policy. So it's a reminder, it might be a good reminder for principals to remind their families if there are going to be volunteers to get plenty of time.
Right, and I know it's something that, based on my own experience, comes up quite often when you're volunteering at the schools and at these events, so this is just adding another sort of layer to it.
I do want to say, and we haven't had this conversation, but if something comes back on somebody's quarry from 15 years ago, we're going to have a conversation. That is very typical, and it could be something innocuous in terms of, I don't know, driving under the influence 15 years ago when somebody was 19. We still have the conversation, but we don't, you know, usually say no if something's within the last year or two. We have very serious conversations, and anything to do with violence or children or, we don't even have a conversation. It's no, we can't have you come. So quarries are taken very seriously, and I just want the community to know that.
Thank you.
And just also the safest fingerprinting as well.
Yes.
Do you run the quarries if somebody is not fingerprinted, or do you, because that's also a requirement? Like, how do you work that?
So the fingerprinting, they go and they have it done, and the report is then sent to me, so I run that. I check it usually twice a week to update the spreadsheet, and those are good for seven years. There didn't, used to be, it used to be good forever, but they've just recently changed that. So now if anything's over seven years, we have to have them done.
But you need the fingerprint and the...
And the quarry in order for them to volunteer at the school.
Correct. The negative becomes, if somebody is quarried today and something happens with them tomorrow, we don't know. And I actually was in a conversation with a series of superintendents who, there is a new system out that is being, obviously there are people who are very much against it, but, that is being tried to, and I think is going to be available to schools next year, where a quarry becomes an ongoing process. So there's an update if something happens. But, but people need to understand that once we get a quarry, we go by the quarry, and if the quarry was two years ago, we may not know, and that concerns me, but there's not much we can do. So that's important information.
I have a question about the quarry. So who talks to the person? So say the quarry comes back, and it is like from 10 years ago and the person had a DUI. Is that you? You, okay. I didn't know if it was the SRO that talks to them.
No, I do, and it's really, if it's 10, 11, 12 years ago, it's usually a phone call.
Right.
And some people have been really appreciative because they thought it was expunged from their record, and, you know, we've had others who have had a few choice words, so, you know, it's okay.
Can I ask while we're on the topic? It's been a few years, but I can remember it was off-site where you got the fingerprinting.
It still is.
It still is?
Yep.
Okay. Has that ever been entertained to?
No.
Have something like that onsite, even?
The amount of work that it...
It's expensive.
Sure.
We also want to make sure people are paying for it, and if it's here, it becomes, I'm not saying, I don't know what our legal ability to charge, but we're not, we don't charge people for things, so.
Understood.
As much as we can put away from Renee's desk, the better.
Of course.
So I know the quarry's not off-site, but as a volunteer, you also get run through Raptor. Does Raptor pick up the same things as quarry? Just curious if that would be more current?
So Raptor will pick up probably more up-to-date than, than anything else. It tends to deal with sexual exploitation of children, sexual abuse, violence. It may not pick up some other things, but it's something. Again, it's just one more layer. And a volunteer who comes into a building, even though they've been quarried and fingerprinted, still has to do Raptor. And if they don't have their license, we had some people from the United Way come and do a care closet at FES, and one of the women from United Way did not have a license, and unfortunately, she sat outside. Even though we were in the hallway, I felt like, I felt badly, but that's the way we have to do it.
Good question. Thank you.
I'm just on the board of the Gray's PTO, so fingerprinting definitely affects them. Can you, I couldn't hear what you said. Did you say they expire now for seven years or 10 years?
Could you mind coming up?
Julie Kobeth from Lakeville. I'm just on the Gray's PTO board, and I couldn't hear if you said the fingerprints will now expire at seven years or 10 years?
So they don't, there's no, it doesn't necessarily expire. It's, we cannot take, so there's also a suitability letter that can be transferred in between the districts, school districts only. So I get them all the time. Somebody can have their fingerprinting done for Bridgewater, and so they don't have to pay again, that district will send me a suitability letter letting me know that they were approved, their report came back clean. I can't accept anything over seven years if it's a suitability. So it gets a little tricky. There's a lot of talk right now between a lot of the school districts as to whether it should be a hard stop after seven years for everybody and you have to have them redone again, but as of right now, it's more of like volunteer-type things coming in for, for fingerprinting.
So far now, it's okay for us to keep our statements to people that your quarry expires after three years. Fingerprints are good, as long as you're doing them for our district.
Right.
But quarries on Lake fingerprints are not transferable, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I do think it's a great conversation for our state reps in terms of, do we change fingerprinting? So seven years is a long time, in my opinion, and so do we change it to three years? Renee says no.
No, 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 not, but also not, the reports don't always match either. Somebody can have a quarry come back and it can, I mean, it can be quite the record, but their fingerprints are clean.
Right.
So it's, it's very, it's very different.
DCF, we have to do them every year now.
For?
Fingerprints for DCF.
Yeah.
Every year.
Are you paying every year as well?
No, they pay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so in addition to that, in your package, you also received the, the accountant's report for the FY '23 end-of-year report, which was submitted last year. In that report, in the analysis of the end-of-year report, the auditor found several issues relative to federal grant reporting, overstatement of expenditures in Schedule I, homeless transportation expenditures, the issue was, in that case was, there was a, one of the expenditures was left out. Employee separation costs were not fully reported, out-of-district tuitions were not fully reported, and then transportation ridership was not identified in terms of numbers of riders. The value of the dollar value was, was reported, but not the number of riders, or, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, that's not correct. So a number of riders was identified, it was not the correct number of riders. It was an estimate from one year, as opposed to the number that would be, we get from the transportation company. So we, we kind of expected that. If you remember, we talked about the end-of-year report, how it had been submitted late, we expected there were going to be some issues and some exceptions, and those are things that, you know, in the process of writing or in the process of putting together the 25-year-end report, there's been some good things to take from it in terms of making sure that the, those things are addressed. Some positive elements that I'd like to share with you. The number of, over the summer, quite a few things were done for the district that I think were significant upgrades. I would like, if possible, Greg, would you be willing to share the little story about the pothole repairs? Because I find that to be quite interesting there. We had pothole repairs across our campus as a result of Greg coming in contact with a gentleman who owns his own asphalt company and was here with his kids in the playground, saw a bunch of potholes and said...
He'd like to help. Again, he drove around and he thought that we could really use and benefit from his help, and he showed up and we had a really nice conversation, and he said they came up to enjoy our playground, they took a ride around the campus, and he's like, I can help you guys out. So as that, at the end of our conversation, and through the school committee voting yes on his donation to us, he came around and he did a really nice job, and he did some serious pothole repair for us, and it's very appreciated, and I know people who've been driving through him are probably clapping right now. You know, it's something we deal with every year, so it really was a load off, and we couldn't thank them enough for it.
It was a good afternoon when Greg came in and we sat down and talked about how we have somebody who wants to not just give money, they want to give us a thing, a thing that is, you know, a big headache. So it was, it was really fantastic, and they did it, the turnover from the moment that they offered to, obviously in the school committee accepted the donation, and then they were on it within 48 hours and it was done. It was really something. So very, very helpful, and very happy about that.
The campus, I'm sorry, Jack, just a reminder, it's LMM Asphalt from Middleborough. They deserve a plug because they gave us a tremendous amount of support, and our tires appreciate it, and those who have kids who are driving through the high school, you definitely appreciate it, so thank you to them. Right. And we thank, we've already thanked them and sent letters and said we would be more than willing to say they did a great job.
Yeah, they did. Our campus fire suppression storage tank passed its five-year inspection over the summer, which is always a good step to go through. In the buildings, we had our vestibule security in all the buildings. The AI phones were installed that was started at the, in the springtime and then completed over the summer. In ARHS, the crew was out painting new lot lines in the parking lot. We had, we have repairs to our HVAC deficiencies that are ongoing, but those are elements that we had discussed previously. This will do quite a bit for us in terms of improving our efficiency and our costs relative to our HVAC usage. We, you can see here in the back of the library, the, several staff members, including the administration, as well as the custodial crew, opened up a new classroom space in the library, that area back there, moving the old stacks and creating a space for additional usage for the students. We have a new senior lounge space in the library, I believe that's over in that corner over there now, for the seniors, as well as a new media lab space in the library, which I believe is in that corner there, in that inside the, oh, no, I'm sorry, through those doors, through those doors over there, my apologies. At the middle school, we also, as I said, the AI phones were installed. The gymnasium floor, which is the original gymnasium floor, it still is the original floor, but it had not had a refinishing other than a new coat of polyurethane over its 20-plus years of existence. Over the summer, we had it sanded down to the wood and then resurfaced, or refinished. It looks great, there's some new graphics. It really has put a new life in that gymnasium, and when you get an opportunity to see it, you'll, you'll be very impressed, it looks great. The upgraded window balance hardware is a project that needed to be done so that it's easier, this is just age of the systems. Over time, the springs start to lose their, their strength, and so the, we had a company come in, update some hardware, both in the middle school as well as Grace. This was done through ESSER spending and was quite an improvement, as you'll, if you talk to the teachers, they can more easily move, open their windows and close their windows. We have seven new cafeteria tables coming to the middle school. Those are replacing seven old tables, and at one time in the middle school, all the tables were, had chairs, and then they eventually bought a bunch of new ones that had stationary benches for each one, so eight stationary benches. There were some remaining tables. This is an opportunity to set them all up so that there's not moving chairs, which can be an issue in any middle school, and that also is going to be through some ESSER spending. And then Promethean boards are also going to be moved, brought into the middle school shortly, as well through some ESSER spending dollars. At Grace, they also had... At Grace, they also had the upgraded window balance hardware, the HVAC deficiencies, the mulch on the playground was in, was put in over the summer, and then also new parking lot painting was done at Grace. At AES, there was new painting and carpet in the main office installed. We had new VCT flooring at three primary entrances. This was in place of some carpet that had been there previously. It was essentially a section of wall-to-wall carpeting at the entryway of the schools, which of course, over time, you can imagine elementary school students tracking in over what is a patch of wall-to-wall carpeting on entrances. It becomes difficult to keep clean. It becomes difficult to manage. So, the news, the new flooring that's in there are panels, is that right? So, they can be replaced individually, similar to what we have in here in the library as well. There was a new floor finishing, put in as part of the summer cleaning, had an antimicrobial element to it, which was a new process that's being done. It'll be done in all the buildings going forward. And then we have the building generating, bidding project under contract. So, that is, we're looking forward to that. Although, I say it's under contract, but it's, the work that needs to be done, given that it's right outside of a classroom, and it's near the playground, it likely won't be able to be done until we start the, until we get to the end of the school year. There'll be some site work that can be done in, during school breaks between now and the end of the school year, but at the end of the school year, they'll be able to do the final installation. And that is in alignment with the expectations from the ESSERs funding. We are allowed to extend it to that point. And in FES, quite a few things happened over at FES, and we really have to thank Free Town, the town of Free Town, for those things. We have an updated fire alarm control panel, a full, updated working fire alarm control panel installed, and one that, you know, we're very thankful to Free Town for putting forth the money and the process to do that. New exterior door and handicap ramp to the gym. That's more than just in progress. I have in progress, but that's only because the railing is the only thing left to be done on the handicap ramp.
Jack, can I add one piece to that?
Sure.
That, in part, is because of the voting. The idea that we want to keep, whether there are no kids in the building or not, whether there are kids in the building or not, which we generally are looking at, not having kids in the building during voting. But if we have adults in the building, teachers, we want to make sure that anybody that is in the building is safe. And so, now people are able to come into the gym, exit the gym, without ever entering the rest of the building. So, excellent, excellent project. And as Jack said, I thank Free Town for that.
Sure. In addition to that, we have, upcoming will be a refinishing of the gym floor at FES, which also has been many, many years since it also, similar to the middle school, and is in need of this refilling, which will be very helpful. And then also upcoming in the, during the school year, maybe even next summer, we're, Free Town is also, and again, thank you for, Free Town for that. Free Town with a front walk repair replacement at Free Town. In addition to that, we have updated the fiber and internet access throughout the school. That was done through, through the E-Rate program, and our Director of Technology, Ryan Blanchard, oversaw that, and we're very helpful and very proud of the work that he put forth to do that. And it's been quite an upgrade. And then finally, we are in the process of upgrading the HVAC control system, which will be centralized control system, which will also improve the efficiency, as well as the cost to heat and cool that school. So, quite a few things have happened over the summer. We're very proud of the work that the crew and the maintenance crew has done, as well as the staff throughout all the buildings.
Any questions, Jack?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, here, we have an update on the FY23 end of year audit. FY24, you mentioned the books are closed, so what's the timeline for the FY24 audit?
So, some of that information is already, we get a list of identified documents that need to be uploaded to the auditor. That list has already been received. We're probably three-quarters of the way through that list that's been uploaded. So, they've already started working on it. And part of that process, too, is that they also do the work for us for our balance sheet. So, that, some of that is, which is the element for E and D, there are some common pieces of data that are used for both, that they have access to and that they've already started working. So, work on it has already started, though in earnest, it won't be for probably about a month or so. But we're expecting it to be done relatively, you know, within probably this calendar year. We'll get the data to them shortly. We'll get that, all the data to them within the next month or so. Remember, they didn't get it last year until March.
Right.
So, they moved relatively quickly, given the timeline that they had, and they'll do, likely do the same thing for us this year as well. But we'll just get the data to them a little bit more quickly.
I have a question.
Sure.
The exceptions that were found in FY23, are we confident that sort of remediation plan that we've put in place, when will we start to see if that's?
So, I'm about to submit the 24 end of year report. Those exceptions are things that were, so the end of year report is this very heavy spreadsheet, where you're entering in all of the expenditures and revenue for the district for that fiscal year. So, the exceptions that were identified were incorrect data entered into the spreadsheet.
District transportation was one.
Yeah, as I went through, those things that were the exceptions. So, in the 24, we'll know when we submit the 24. Once again, our auditor will do an analysis of our end of year report, but it'll be much sooner because I'll be submitting it on.
So, then am I understanding correctly, it's more of like a clerical error, and not?
Yes.
Like a systemic?
Correct. It's an error related to completing the task correctly. The task of the report, not the task of managing.
Okay, no other questions? I thank you, Jack, for the update.
So, Kelly and I are gonna leapfrog each other, if that's okay?
That's okay with me.
Okay.
So, thanks, and take care.
So, part of the work that I continue enjoying over the summer is working with teachers on activities and things to polish curriculum, learn new frameworks, expand some of the things that are happening in the classroom. And this year, I was approached in, well, actually, I think I might have been approached in my first weeks here, two years ago, about report cards. So, whenever you take on new frameworks, and you take on, come on up here, come up here. Whenever you take on new frameworks, or have changes in curriculum, oftentimes that requires a revisit to the report cards. And so, we had a team of teachers get together and look at the report card, and our, we're gonna talk about what we did. And it was a fantastic group to work with, because somebody's talked about having that great conversation that's like a 360-degree view, right? Like, what about this? What about this? And putting all feelings aside, we were like determined to create an updated report card that communicated well to parents, and made sense to teachers, and made it reasonable to provide information. And we're gonna kind of go over some of that tonight for you. Other work that was done this summer was site word lists and assessments for those site word lists, work on math scope and sequence documents. The health teachers got together to look at the new frameworks and start to look at where we have gaps. And then our history teachers at the middle school looked at some resources for investigating history. So, for now, we're gonna bring our representatives up from our team, and we're gonna talk about, Jack, will you like man that for me, please?
Do it, just do this.
Yep. So, this is a group that worked together, and we had a team of teachers and our two fearless leaders of the elementary schools meeting over three or four different times, looking, actually, it might have been five or six, now that I think about it. And we had a, had a whole great process of looking through report cards and identifying what we wanted to alter on ours. And our real goal was to make user-friendly report cards for teachers and parents. So, it is really hard as a parent to look at something and go, this makes no sense to me. It doesn't tell me where my child is. So, we had some great conversation around specificity and fine tuning the rating scale. All of the specialist teachers took part in this. That was something that I did separately with them. And it was an amazing conversation to have music and art and phys ed teachers talking about how they wanted to communicate growth in the students' learning in their areas as well. So.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Kay. I was third grade last year, that's why I says third grade up there, but this year I'm second grade. So, as Terry was saying, we all talked about the reasoning why this needed to be updated. There's new frameworks that need to be, that were new, so we had to update the report card in order to match it, the new curriculum, improved feedback to families, the redundancy in student performance, cohesive rating scales were needed, and subjective verbiage in the numeric grade rating scale. So, together, we all collaborated and came up with what we thought was best. And we got feedback from our peers at school, at our staff meetings, and this is what we had come up with, and we're still working on it.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Anne Day. I'm a first grade teacher at Aspen. This team worked so diligently researching report card formats from other districts. We brainstormed what we thought would be feasible and most beneficial for staff and families, while incorporating our core values, which was really important to us. These ideas were then presented at staff meetings, so everyone had an opportunity to share their ideas and voice their opinions. We really wanted this to be a collective process with everyone involved and everyone heard.
It was really fun to be in the meetings as we would start to like get more and more comfortable with questioning each other and questioning some of those adjectives that were used, and, and the ratings, and down to the details of what the words meant and would mean to a parent receiving that information. So, it was fun debates.
It really was. Hi, everyone. I'm Olivia Martino. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Aspen. I was lucky enough to be on this report card committee. As Terry has mentioned, we had a lot of good conversations. And a lot of our conversations started by research. We have a huge shared document with all different examples of report cards from other districts that we were able to look at, see what we liked, what we didn't like, verbiage that we liked to see, different elements that we liked, whether it was putting a grade here, or not grading certain elements of, you know, what a child does at school. So, we did our due diligence with research. We looked through many, many different types of report cards, and we used all of that collectively to kind of build the new report card that we would like to see. That was much easier for families and educators alike to really see how your kids are progressing throughout the year. And then we just have one final thing for you. That being said, we have some transitioning to do to get into this new report card. So, we want to make sure that we get all the input that we can in order to make this report card the most effective for the educators who are using it, as well as the families who are reading it and receiving those reports on your students' progress. All of our specialist teachers were involved in the creation and finalization of their comments. They are very important, and they were able to have a say in how they wanted their specific subjects graded, which is really amazing. We have had staff presentations, as Anne mentioned, throughout this entire process, and we are consistently seeking that feedback, and giving as many opportunities as we can so that we can make sure that this is a report card that we are confident in, that we can confidently put out to the families in our district. We're working pretty diligently with tech to make sure that everything is updated in Aspen, and that it's easy to, you know, navigate on our end. So, we have some next steps. Our staff input is being finalized right now, so all staff has had a chance to look at this new report card and give their feedback and their opinions. So, we are going to give it to parent councils to review, tech to finalize on the Aspen side of things, and hopefully, we will be able to have this ready for our term one report cards that will be going out this year.
And we're super excited to take science and history out of one cell into like multiple cells. If you have looked at, like, that's one of those pieces where we said, we know that literacy is a priority, but it's okay to note how much your child is learning about science and history as well in the elementary schools. So, any questions?
Any questions from the table? Nice job.
This was our, this was the exciting summer work. Like, all of the summer work is exciting, but this was like super exciting, because it was a long time coming.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would just say, thank you for the collaboration. Thank you for your time. It's certainly something that's very important. I love that you're involving parent councils. I think that's great. And then working and sharing out with your colleagues is so important. This goes back to our discussion as part of your evaluation, where presentations like this, where we see what's going on in the schools, we see what staff are doing in terms of professional development, development, excuse me, is really a point of pride for the district. So, thank you for your time today. Appreciate it.
I just want to say to all of you, I've been in enough districts, in the principal level, teacher level, I've never seen a process as smooth as this. I've seen it take two, three, four years for report card changes. So, I applaud you. And I didn't sit in one meeting, but to be at this stage right now is a credit to you. And to those who aren't in this every day, I don't think anybody can understand how far wild this could go. And, and you kept it, and you should be proud of yourselves. Thank you.
Yeah, and just further syncing that with Aspen and working with IT is not an easy task. So, it's an ambitious time line, but great job.
Thank you, everyone.
The teacher voices started the process with me, and so I wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to share out today, tonight as well, because they're fantastic. The rest of my report is fairly bullet pointy, and you have it in front of you. I'll just have, I just want to say two things. We have had a wonderful uptick of families that are multilingual in our district. We have, at the time that I wrote my report, there were 43 initial notifications that were sent out to families over the summer that provide their home language surveys, that noted that they speak multiple languages in the home. What that caught, what that allows for, and not causes, allows for, is we then screen the students when they arrive in September, and we make sure that they are not in need of EL services. We don't have those. We're just in the process of finalizing those. Most of the students were adept at speaking in both English and their, and their home language. So, we don't have a, we don't anticipate a high uptick of EL students, per se, but I'm super excited about the languages that are coming into the, into the district. And then, the grants are still in the process of being approved. I think the state is a little behind on approvals, but all of our, we have all those grants that were worked on from April through August, still in, like, waiting to be approved. The Title I data report was accepted. That was filed in July. And then, our homeschool numbers are up. We have 82 students. However, there are 11 students that are currently out of compliance. They have not turned in their education plan, or, or their progress towards proficiency from last year. And that keeps them in a, I keep notifying, right? I have a process for notifying them and requesting that information. I think since the 11, I've gotten two of them up to date. So, I think I'm at nine right now.
What do you do if they continue to be out of compliance? Just curious.
Right. Well, we have, we have choices, right? And I reached out when I started homeschooling. Homeschooling was new to me when I, when I took this role in the district. So, I did reach out to people, and I continue to. And it's very different in different districts. Technically, they are truant. If they haven't supplied their education plan and been officially approved, then they are technically truant, and we should be filing a, a report on them. At this time, what I've done for some of the students that have, because they've been families in our homeschooling program for a while, I will say that the monitoring system was lax.
Archaic.
Okay. Was a little archaic or lax. And so, I might have been one of the first people that asked people for their progress towards proficiency, but it is a requirement. The state is clear that we are able to ask for that. And it's just as a part of support. So, I have fortunately had several of the families come in and sit down with me, and I've shown them some of our supplemental resources that they can create from the cells. For example, ST Math allows for free homeschooling accounts. I love showing that. You know how much I love ST Math. And so, I've been able to show some of our families that. So, it's really nice to have conversation. I love when they come in and bring their ed plans. I get to meet them. They bring in work, and I get to look at work that their child is doing, and, and ask them if they need anything from us. We have several of our homeschool families that are participating in after-school functions at both the middle school and the high school. So, I really, I'm hoping that our homeschool program feels supported by the district still, and that it is a collaborative process.
So, to answer more, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
No, no. I was just gonna say, thank you.
To answer more of that, if I
To answer more of that, if a student is homeschooled, they are allowed to play sports for exam. However, if they're not in compliance, they don't. If, you know, we certainly do not want to start filing CRAs and start filing things, but parents also have to understand, part of our concern becomes, is the student actually in town? So Terry gets things, we have no idea where they're from. They're not leaving addresses. They're saying, "My child X name is going to be homeschooled. We'll send return."
Certified mail.
Certified letter. It comes back. Then we're kind of stuck. So, you know, people are getting, and most people are fantastic. But what I worry about is our students who, for example, are interested in going to Old Colony or BP who have not provided education plans. Because we're not going to sign off to BP that they are in good standing. So it gets really complex.
It also helps, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say it also helps at the high school level. As soon as they hit middle school, honestly, when they start to be able to make choices about content area, it really helps to help pave that way for them and show what their, their education journey has looked like. I worked with a family that had no progress towards monitoring in any of the years, but they wanted to get their child into a technical college. So the technical college and I and the family were having a three-way phone calls and trying to make sure that we could figure out, you know, what learning had occurred and where they, that student needed to go. So they also don't receive diplomas from us as a high school graduate. Is a GED, they have to take the GED. That's all information that I try to help the parents and the families understand as they move through a homeschooling journey.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I know years ago, you used to file a CHINs report, children in need of services. A parent and the child would go into court, and the court could impose a plan that the parent had to follow. It was quite common in the district that I was in. So I don't know if they still do that or not.
I keep, I try not to get there, right? I call, I send emails, I send second requests, I, I send the like, you know, please respond by. I try to be as, you know, non-threatening, but exclam, like exclamation points on my stuff. So try to get people to just work with me.
The new name is CRA.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So I try not to. But I, you know, like Val is willing to, you know, work with me, and I call the towns to find out if the people really are living in the addresses they provided and doing, you know, site, you know, well visits and stuff. It's important. We want to make sure our kids are okay and being taken care of.
Could I ask a question, Terry?
Yes.
Going back to English language learners?
Yep.
Could you speak a little bit about just translation of district documents?
Sure.
Is that?
It is a growing repository for us, right? We had nothing translated. And so I have been working on translating documents through, just honestly, through Google Translate, which the shortcoming on that is that it is a formal translation, right? So knowing languages, when you speak Spanish growing up near Mexico, it is not a formal Spanish language. It's not like Spain, and it's not like Argentina. It's not, it's not a Spanish that is, it's a different dialect, right? So if I give us a paper that's formally translated to a family, it is difficult to read for them still, because that's not really the language that they're, they're speaking and reading in. So, but I am working on that. We have several of our documents that are translated on the website, everything on the website, because we have that, does translate to their home language. We actually have a new language, Telugu, Telugu? Am I pronouncing it wrong? But it's a brand new one that just came in this summer. I had to reach out to the state because there is, they don't even have their notifications in the right language translation. I couldn't even identify it. So that's exciting to me as I start to work on that, and we just continue to build it. So I have our EL teachers reach out to me, and they send me forms, and I work on translating them. Our report cards, Ally worked with me last year to, to figure out how to get our report cards translated. So we had that processed down. It is very costly to pay someone to translate documents. We don't have those funds in the district currently, so I'm, I'm doing the best I can. We do not have newcomers in the district, so we are at an advantage that most of our families have multilingual speakers in the home. But working on it, I have a file that says translations, and it's in all sorts of languages, different documents.
And translators are expensive. Phone service translators, I mean, they're important. We need them when we need them, but they are expensive.
How many different languages are we utilizing in the district?
We have, right now, we have 17 different languages.
Wow.
For currently 32 active students. So it's exciting.
I think we were at eight when you came in.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a, I would love to revisit at some point, and this isn't a solution, but the Smore platform for newsletters, there is a nice translation feature to that and does have multiple dialects. So that may solve some of the problems, but it's easy to translate notices and then send through Aspen in that way.
We have a meeting with Smore in a couple of weeks.
There's also a, a hearing, like a, a phone, I, my, my girlfriend in Holliston was just telling me about a service that is less expensive than even getting a translator that allows for like the recordings. And you see them at Disneyland, or, you know, you see people that have, that are able to get the translation services, and it's basically, I'm not sure exactly how it works. I'm going to investigate it though. That's a new one for me. And I'll see what that cost is, because it would be nice to have that in the offices so that, you know, the secretaries can at least help someone when they come in. Any ideas? I love them.
Any additional questions from Ms. Fleming?
Can I ask a question?
Come on. Go ahead. Please come up.
I just had a question about the, so that, the report cards, that was for FES and AES. Is there, are you looking into the GRAZE Middle School, High School, or are those kind of where they should be?
Well, the grades at the middle, GRAZE Middle School and High School are not, they're not competency-based, they're not performance-based. So as a calculation, it's not something that we've looked at. But I'm happy to open that can of worms and talk about really the comments. And I know that the middle school in particular recently did their revision, and Jack could speak to it because he was a part of that, with the character traits and the stuff that are on there that are scored. So, but because they're calculations of letter grades.
They did grades of, it was about a two-year process right before I became the principal. So it was not, it's not standard space. So it's grades. It was a very long process.
Good. Thank you.
Terry, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Last but not least.
Love going last. All right, special education. So currently, and when I say currently, this number changes every single day, so it's probably currently as of when I submitted this report. But we have 521 students on IEPs right now currently in the district. 472 of those, I say building total, it's, it's in the buildings, but it's also homeschool or private school where we're responsible for them. We have 35 out of district, and we have 14 that are in others like Brislaggy, BP, OC, that type of thing. Looking at our eighth grade transfers over the last eight years, it's ranged from 12 to 23 students each year that leave eighth grade into ninth grade and go into those schools. So I kind of, you know, later on, looked at an average of that when I'm predicting kind of over this year. But right now, we have 14 this year. So 2023, 2024 evaluations, again, this is helping me kind of predict where we're going this year and going into next year. We had 165 initial evaluations, which were students that were not on IEPs, and 102 qualified in the 23, 24 years. So that was 62% of initial referrals, whether those referrals were parents, school teams, that somebody had qualified. And then reevaluations, we had 151 students due for reevaluation that we evaluated, and 126 qualified, which is more predictable. Students that have already been on IEPs have been identified previously, so the number is higher. So in that case, 83% of reevals continue to qualify for special education. So our total number of evaluations conducted last year was 316. That's between initial and reevaluations. You can imagine with three school psychologists trying to do 316 evaluations, it was a lot for them. We did need to contract out. This year, we've brought on that fourth school psychologist, which is really eliminating that need to contract out. So we're excited about that. It's also made them building-based at the high school. So the overall increase, looking at all of the evaluations, was 77 students last year. I know Ashley had done some predictions and numbers. I'm just kind of going off what I saw and moving forward. So 77 increase. Right now, kind of right now, we had initial evaluations pending and being in the process. There were 39, but I just looked, since that time, we're up seven more. So we're at 46. Initial or, yeah, initial evaluations only right now at 46 in the district. From the trends of the pending initial evaluations, it's likely of the 46, 28 would qualify, or 28.52 would qualify. That would put the 24, 25 school year trend at 85 students over the year, if we looked at the trend, would, would increase. Last year, 25 students didn't qualify at the reevaluation. So if you put those numbers together, we're looking at a full increase or an increase of 60 students in special education. So at the end of this year, the projection would have us at 581 students. Special education is really hard to predict and determine, so that's just a ballpark number, but it's with my best numbers that I have. And that's prior to move outs and graduates. So I did look, we have 21 projected graduates in senior class. That number could change. And the average trend of eighth grade transfers is 17 if I look at the last eight years, kind of give and take. So overall, my projection to start next year, September, September 1, would be about 543 special education students, which would be up about 22 from where we are now. Again, that could change, but it's my best guess at this point. And last year, we did approximately 750 total meetings in the district. I know there had been questions kind of circulating last year before I was in this role of, why can't administrators chair every single special education meeting? And if you look at 750 meetings and you divide by three administrators, that's 250, and that doesn't count the other meetings they're doing. They each did about 25 transition meetings in June for kids going from building to building. So it's just really an impossibility. So they are the ones that are, that are at the initials, the reevals, they're at all homeschool meetings, they're at all private school meetings, and they're at all localization meetings. So that the administrators really are present in a lot of the meetings. The meetings they're not typically at are many of the annual review IEP meetings. Last year, we had 15 move-ins and 12 move-outs. So there was, you know, an increase of three students. This year, so far, looking really at the summer, going into September, we had 14 move-ins and 18 move-outs. So if I look in the last, I would say, 14 months or so, we're just minus one student between move-ins and move-outs. So we're pretty steady there. The one thing to note, though, we did have four students move in, as we would consider sub-separate students across the district. So that did increase the resources, because it depends on the students moving in and what they require. Moving into CPAC, so I met with the co-chair and the secretary through Google Meet on August 27th, to kind of plan for the year. It was a good meeting. We got a lot accomplished. First meeting with CPAC was held last Tuesday on September 17th. We had a great turnout. I, anyone listening, please join and come and be part of CPAC. They need you so we can continue to operate and do great things for our kids in the district. Like I said, it was a great turnout. I think people made some great connections already, and we want to keep that moving. They are going to all be in person this year. That is what the Board of CPAC is, is wanting. So right now, they're all planned to be in person. Special education administrators have been assigned to meetings for the year. So myself will be majority, but then the other administrators are each going to be representing at a meeting. We all were there last Tuesday, as was Mr. Strauss at that first initial meeting. If anybody wants a good time, this Tuesday, I'm doing the Parents Rights presentation. You should come. And then there's, I'm going to talk about the new IEP too. So in all seriousness, it really would be a good opportunity for people to come and learn more about that. And then we are also, they're going to be on the first Tuesday of every month, with the exception of November due to Election Day. So that one's going to bounce to the Monday that month. Something else we're doing that is connected to CPAC, but not, after every administrator-led initial evaluation or reevaluation meeting, we're sending out a survey now this year that we just kind of gaining information on if parents felt like they were part of the process and all of that. It would be connected to CPAC as well. There's CPAC information in there. So I think we're trying to get that out as much as we possibly can. We did have flyers at the middle school night the other night. We also had, we have the flyers up in the buildings, and then we've been sending them home with families. So we're trying to have as much representation there as possible. Going into vacancies and hiring, we had a bit of a stressful summer going into the end of August, and I just want to give accolades to everyone who worked so hard to get us hired, because we are, with the exception of a para, we are fully staffed, and we were not a month ago. So we had a special education teacher that was hired for GRAZE. We got a resignation a day before new teacher orientation. We have since hired, and that person started on the 16th of September, which is an amazing turnaround. And I give so much credit to Liz for, for moving on that quickly. And then also, the ARHS, we had a resignation June 20th, the last day of school for the following year. So we had the summer to do it, but it was hard to find a teacher. We hired, they started on the 23rd, and I'm already hearing great things. They came from another district. So it's going really well. We also had another resignation from the ARHS on August 12th for the high school. So the high school was concerning. I was, it was keeping me up at night a bit. But we hired also for that, and that teacher is starting on Monday, so we're very excited. The high school teachers have been amazing. They took on, so kids did not miss their services. They reallocated caseloads, and they were rock stars. So I have to give them that credit as well. We did have a para resignation yesterday at Freetown Elementary, so the posting is up, and we're hoping to hire for Freetown soon. And we are filling it and subbing it, and the need is covered, but we want to hire a full-time person to get in there. So that's what we have for hiring and vacancies. Nursing, Terry and I have been working hard together on nursing. We are excited to say that we hired a float nurse. She's already started. Her name is Haley Martin. We hired her two weeks ago, and within two days, we asked her to go on a community trip, so we didn't have to cancel it. And she said, "Sure thing," and she jumped on the van, and away we went. So we were excited. She has a lot of hospital experience for the last couple of years, so, and she's in her master's degree to get for public health. So she's, she was a great grab for us. She's going to support all the buildings, and she's training at each building. So she's assigned different days for when she will be training. And then Joan Bullock has been appointed as the lead nurse. So we're, we also, in concert with Terry and I, Joan has been huge in the hiring process for the float nurse. She's been very communicative with us, and it's been going really well. Additionally, I have to give another shout out to Jen Seberg and Heather Ashley, because they have been pounding the pavement for nursing subs. And we now have three nursing subs that are going to be available to us for, especially for community trips, but also just for the district. So that was a huge win, and they've been doing that all week. So they have connections that I yet do not have, because I'm newer to the district. But it's been fantastic. I'm very excited about nursing. And then the last kind of piece is that I have the grant work. Jen Seberg got all the grant stuff finalized. It got in, it's been processed. So the good thing about that is we've been able to add unique learning systems, which is a life skills curriculum. It, and we, it is aligned from pre-K up through age 22. We were able to use the grant money for that, and it's in banded strands. It is connected to the frameworks. It also can be used as evidence towards student and cast portfolios. And it also connects to community outings, ADLs, and all academics. And it puts kids on the path that they're at, and it supports it with visuals and right where they are in their learning. So I've used it when I did work in the collaborative, and other teachers that have come into our district have used it. And now we've established, they're going to use it as a year of exploration, and next year, we're going to hone down a bit more with that curriculum. But I'm really excited about that. Indicator 14, so for me, that's post-secondary outcomes. We have to kind of find out, you know, how are our kids that graduated a couple of years ago? How are they doing? Where are they? What have they pursued? I sent out mailed letters on July 19th, and then I got one response. So I sent out emails again to everyone, did that a couple of times. I got one more response. So again, if anybody sees this, and you're one of those people, I'd love for you to fill that out. They've just extended the timeline, so we have like another week. I think the state in general realized they weren't getting a lot back, so they've extended the timeline. And then indicator seven, preschool transition. I submitted that on August 13th. It was due by August 31st. And our preschoolers, it's looking at when they come in, what are their skills in different areas, and where are they rated on a scale of like one to four? And then when they're leaving, what does it look like, and are we showing growth? And we showed really great growth at FES overall. A couple of kids kind of maintained. A couple of kids kind of maintained in just a couple of areas, but overall, the growth was, was great. We did our new rollover in Aspen on August ninth. That went pretty well. And then all the staff have been trained, and they are now using the new IEP. So we're working through that. There are going to be probably some bumps in the road, just getting used to a new document, but everyone is being really positive about it and jumping in, so I appreciate that, too. And then just a reminder, our updated administrator roles, Meredith Foy is pre-K through three, FES, home-based. We have Donna Hillary, who took over for where I was, so she is at Assawalset and at Grays. We have Danielle Johansson. She is grades six through twelve-plus. I am out of district, and then I help out kind of wherever is needed. And then our school psychologist, Karen Kent, is at FES with Meredith. Craig Mugford has joined us, and he is at Grays and AES. Sue Clancy is at the middle school. And Noel Romeo is the new hire that we have at the high school, post-grad, and she is also chairing some meetings there to help out, because the high school and the middle school for Danielle is, is a huge undertaking. One thing to note, we have switched from the district I used to be in. We did iPad testing with Q Global and Q Interactive. Here, we were still paper-based, which slows everyone down when you're paper-based, and the kids are more engaged with the iPads. So we switched that over, and so far, it has, to this point, saved us already nineteen-hundred dollars this year in switching over to iPads. So, and it's given the school psychologists more ability to move quicker through the testing, and it tabulates things quicker for them, so they are able to then move quickly to get through more testing. So I think it's a win-win overall for us in the department.
Nice job.
Questions? I talk fast, but it's also eight-thirty. So, yeah.
Any questions?
I do have one question. You're welcome.
No, go ahead.
It is not my intention to put you on the spot. I had a question in regards to paraprofessionals. We had, we had a discussion, this was months back, it might have been before your appointment, but there was a conversation about possible reevaluation across the district of how we use paraprofessionals, how they are placed. I was, I was curious if you had an update on that, or if you could speak to it? Or if not, would it be possible to have that as part of your report, you know, for our next meeting?
Sure, I can speak to some of it now, and then I can do a deeper dive into a report next time. So I think the question that came to me specifically was around kindergarten at that time, about the equity between FES and AES. And we said that they have the same amount of paraprofessionals supporting both. I think there was a question of, is there more at one building than the other? But the ratio for both is, is exactly the same. Paraprofessionals in the district, it's twofold, right? We have some grade-level paraprofessionals that aren't necessarily connected to special education, but they're supporting the classrooms in general at the grade levels. That's really kindergarten up through fifth grade. And then we have paraprofessionals that really are signed more based on IEP needs and special education. So some students, it's more simplified if they have a one-to-one, then there's a para that's with them as a one-to-one. Other students might have a one-to-two or a one-to-three ratio, so there's a paraprofessional supporting a small group of students across the day. That's how it's mainly structured right now. I do have ideas for paraprofessionals, not making any changes, reducing, adding, just kind of the allocation and, and program supporting and things like that, that, again, would, may happen over time, but that's not taking away from what the kids are already receiving. It's just kind of looking at it differently. So I don't know if that helps to answer your question, but right now, paras are either assigned through grade level, or they're assigned through the needs of students' IEPs. Also, if I have a, a group of kids that somehow goes over nine, which is rare to happen, we have to make sure a paraprofessional is in with the teacher supporting due to ratios and, and support services and things like that. So those have to prioritize as special needs within the IEP, and then the grade levels are kind of separate. So that's kind of where we're at. But if you have like a specific kind of realm you want me to go down to produce a report, I'm totally happy to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that. That, that's great for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. I want to reiterate, two years ago, when we came here, Liz and I had a conversation, and it was paramount, we made it mandatory, or imperative, I don't remember the word we used, was to get to an adjustment counselor. Priorities, to get an adjustment counselor. We also talked about the importance and, and the absolute need for what would have been at the time Kelly's position, which was adding a team chair. I hope that everybody is beginning to see the fruits of those labors, because our special education program is in a much better place. Our students, our student outcomes are better. At least right now at, at Grays, our students are, are doing a better job of advocating. Liz is doing a fantastic job of getting kids at the school. The teachers are all connected, because we have more supports in place. These supports are not wishes, they're needs. And I'm going to continue to advocate in this community, our two communities, that this is not fluff. And it, it was insulting two years ago. I continued to hear the word, it's not sustainable. When I see the success of our special education program, that's the most sustainable thing we have. And, and I'm going to continue saying that.
Thank you. Anyone at the table, questions for Ms. Steele?
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, subcommittee updates. Regional Finance Committee?
I think you know the update. We're looking for the chair. Then I get an opinion.
Superintendent's Evaluation Committee?
We just finished the evaluation. We, Will Sinkowitz owes us a signature, I believe.
That's correct.
And then we moved to a one-year process, which we'll be looking forward to hearing new goals with a formative around December, January, I think is the timeline.
Thank you. Wellness Health Committee? Policy Subcommittee?
No updates.
Capital Committee?
So the report from the Capital Committee should be coming, Jack, do you have any idea?
No, we haven't been given a date yet.
It should be coming any day, and, and what that is, is that is their final report as to the needs assessment, which includes numbers. It includes what schools are pushing the limit in terms of capacity, where the firm believes we have the highest priority of improvements in the district. And then there will be a report after that in terms of what is needed in terms of fields and all of those things.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anyone at the table? Any other business that may properly come before the meeting?
Yes, I would like to break and stay in these.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all. Hope you are in a good spirit. I would like to express my concern about the meeting on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The avalanche of comments from the community is overwhelming, and I think it is time for us as a committee members to reflect on the message that we are sending out to the parents and the students. In my opinion, a message of a godless hatred and rage, not to mention the unprofessionalism, the division, the disrespect, the bullying. There is no belonging, belonging, there was belonging from that meeting. The condescending and downing of the mem, of other members in the committee is beyond repair, and the student body have no place here. It is nothing short of discrimination to me. I am from a third-world country, where I have never seen such a lack of class, dignity, and respect, like it was shown in that meeting. Shameful and disgraceful, it seems that the ego of some members of the committee is far more important than the children. How we can handle anything as a team if we are divided? The chair lost control over the crowd, and the ladies, I use the term loosely, sound like hyenas. It just felt our meeting was held in a project complex. Furthermore, I asked Mr. Strauss in an email if he could, if he could, if he had a doctor know or equivalent via email. For all the time that he had taken off, and I was completely ignored. As a new member of the committee, this will be greatly appreciated for transparency reasons. The purpose of my email was to have the committee members to reflect on how the meeting was out of order, out of control, and beyond disrespectful. Civility and respect are essential to maintain meaningful discourse in difficult, in difficult circumstances. I also believe that you could, that you should be able to disagree with our fear of retaliation or character assassination. The fact that I disagree with your perspective doesn't make me your enemy. Furthermore, as a proud Latino woman, there are, there are millions of Latino living in Massachusetts, and over twenty percent of them living in projects. And there are some of them that I know personally. You might be unaware of that fact, but they are certainly know, and they are not ashamed of living in projects. I also often volunteer with my church during community outreach in projects neighborhood, and I interact with people who live there, although at the time, it can be a bit louder, loud and scary. And that was the origin of my reference in my email. Mrs. Blunt, you misconstrued a few sentences of my email, of my email, from the context to make me a racist. She also went further with a vicious agenda and mentioned that the ladies were here on eight-twenty-one. I called them hyenas, apparently for no reason, according to you, because I am racist and hypocritical. Also, for your advantage, for your advantage, you concealed the level of disrespect that those ladies have here on that day. They demonstrate a lack of greatly disrespect on August twenty-first. I use the phrase loosely, which means I use the term in a way that it was not exact. Mrs. Blunt, I believe you should be ashamed of yourself. Your comments are this disgrace, a disgrace, and in my opinion, show a lack of honesty and integrity. Your statement is very similar to several emails that Will has sent me before. Your reckless statement used to target my persona, it could very well put me in danger. I hold you responsible to nine, because I'm a mother, I'm a wife, and I have a son that I adore. If anything happened to me, have that very clear in your head, I will hold you responsible for that. I will not stand for this. You falsely called me a racist, and that is serious. Additionally, you attack my character as same way as you did to Crystal. You are not my boss, and not going to subjugate by your, by the object of your childish tantrum or your misguided agenda. I am here to do what is right for the students and their families. I will not resign, and William, you must stop asking me to resign, as you are becoming very annoying. I will continue the good fight. Besides that, someone in this committee emailed all the emails to the town Tonga said, but you do not email the full story. You just emailed some of the emails, but you kept some of them, because you're trying to frame me as a racist. It is a disgrace. It is disgusting, like, as you always say. It looks like you're trying to kill two birds with one shot, which is me and Crystal. Why you, why you look at negativity is because we are, we ask question. We have the right to ask question. We don't need to be here, the lawyer of the superintendent. We are here to work with him in collaboration, to do what is best for the district. I'm not here to follow your agenda or Will's agenda or anybody's agenda. I am here to do what is right for my community and for the students. And if you like it or not, that's your problem. You guys are pushing me out, you guys cannot wait. Will keep, continue asking me when I'm going to resign. Anything I don't like, or maybe I have all the emails. How many times that man has been asking me when I'm going to resign? They're all here. This is unacceptable. This is disgusting. It is, on many levels. Thank you.
So, speaking of honesty and character assassination, I have two questions, John. First question is, where are we in the investigation, where we four veterans were accused of sexism and racism? Where are we with that?
Do you want me to answer that?
No, I'm asking John. He's our chair.
We, as a, or as a committee, we spoke in a meeting that none of us felt that we had witnessed any of that, and we had refused to accept those.
Okay. Second question. Where are we in the investigation of the emails? Because I have received, along with many of the veteran committee members, have received emails, still wanting to know about the emails, and I have asked you every week to provide me with where we are with that, and every week, I get the same answer, that Crystal, who stated in open session to our attorney that she would be handing over that information that night, has still not done it. Is that correct?
Yes, to date, that is correct.
So I took it upon myself to put in a public records request to find information about emails. I foolishly had July thirty-first in my head, because that was the first time that we learned in open session that an email, confidential email, had been distributed outside of the committee. What I found here is yet another email that was sent to four people outside of our committee. And unfortunately, because you sent them two personal emails, I cannot call them out, but we all knew who they were, and they were not a surprise by any means. So now, I am asking for a motion to have one person on our committee. I would like to nominate Courtney, because she's not a veteran, and so she can't be accused of possibly interfering. But I would like to entertain a motion to nominate Courtney to work with Alan Strauss and our legal department, to start from April first and go through all of the emails, because this is now two emails. And where this is not a legal violation, it is an ethical violation. And that being said, where there's one, there's two, where there's two, there's God knows how many. So I think it's time that we put this to rest, because you're right, we belong dealing with the children. And you, unfortunately, were named by Crystal in that OML as calling us racist and sexist.
So you had to deal with that with Crystal, not with me?
It had nothing to do with you, other than the fact that you are the only person that displayed anything like that. So back to the motion, I would like to put a motion forward to have Courtney, Alan, and our legal department work on all of these emails from four-one. And God, I truly wish that I could name all the wonderful people on this email, because it won't be a surprise to many, but it will be a surprise to many. But unfortunately, I cannot. Okay.
A second motion. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at the table? I have a question. Courtney, is that something you are okay with?
Yes, I, my interest is in getting back to the business of the school committee without all this extraneous. I want to talk about the students, class sizes, buses, transportation. I want to put all of this to bed, and if an investigation is what it is going to take for us to resolve it, for ourselves and for the public and the staff and the students, then yes.
Excellent. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. I would just further add, I, I think I used the word investigation a couple of weeks ago, and we settled on having the attorney be present. I, I think what, what's been lost in all of this is some sort of final assessment of what's going on. There's still a pending investigation on the emails. There's still a pending investigation on the emails. There's really no closure and I think, you know, we started the process tonight by, by looking at a reorg, but I think we just need to move forward. And I agree, I can't agree with you more. We do need to get back to the students, the staff and the school community. We deserve better. The community deserves better. So I think we need to really formalize whatever you want to call it, an investigation or do something, whether it's third party or our own people, but we need to move on here.
Yep. And our community and our staff deserve that.
Yes, we do. Okay, I have a meeting and I have a second. Any additional discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion to elect Courtney Breiten as a representative of the school committee to work with Alan and legal counsel to investigate
All the emails.
improper email.
Yes, emails.
Is that sufficient language to the committee?
Yes, since April 1st.
Okay. To evaluate emails from the time of April 1st to current. Roll call vote?
I don't, I don't think you need a roll call.
Okay.
I think it'll be reflected in the notes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes.
There we go.
I have two pieces, but, go ahead.
Yeah, I have, I have to address Carolina's speech here. Four members on this committee were accused of thinly veiled racism and sexism. I didn't see you defending any of us.
I wasn't here on that meeting. I wasn't, I wasn't even here.
You certainly received the information.
I know, but I wasn't here.
You didn't, you didn't, made no effort to, to diffuse that. You made no effort to deny that.
How I could it after her statement?
You made no statement to even say you've never even seen it.
How I could it after her, after she did that statement? I work in projects. I do community outreach.
Motion to adjourn.
You know what she is doing to me? You have no idea.
I guess I don't because I think I was at a different meeting than you were at.
Exactly.
All right, everyone.
Can I say something if someone was here around here? So I've been attending pretty much all of these meetings since April and I was, I'm sorry, Chris Dudley from Masona. I was here on the August 21st meeting, which is also on Lake Cam, so it's for everyone to see. You can watch that video and you can see nothing that was in that email that came afterwards. The comments that are made about the chair losing control of the meeting were comments about after the meeting had adjourned, so that's invalid. And then the miscategorization of having people say there was hyenas. I heard somebody, I don't remember which person in the audience, simply asked a question. Asked a question from the, the audience after the meeting had adjourned. Snarky comments came as somebody walked down the hall instead of answering the question. So, so attacking members of the community for simply asking questions is unfair. That's not what this committee is for. And I didn't know, I didn't see any of that and I don't think anyone else saw any of that. I was shocked when I heard your email saying there was hyenas in the room. It's absurd. And anyone that's here would feel that that was absurd. As a member of the community and a parent in the district, I don't like seeing this because these are the people making decisions for my children's education and it's inappropriate.
Yep, but I think you have a very bad memory or you
The meeting was recorded. The meeting was recorded.
Or you just do not want to see the whole thing.
Motion to adjourn.
The ladies that were there, the three ladies that were there.
I was sitting right behind them. I was sitting behind them.
They were yelling, they were interrupting you.
Everyone, please.
It was unnecessary.
John, please.
I was sitting right there behind them.
And respect is a two-way street.
Mr. Nadas, please. Mr. Dudley? Mr. Dudley, thank you.
That's all I had to say is that I was here for that meeting and I witnessed it all through the end and I didn't see anything that was categorized that way.
Mr. Dudley, thank you. We appreciate it.
Right, you need to.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, everyone.